Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. This is the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. And could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here. Thank you for that. So we will be moving on to our land acknowledgement. The City of Kattati recognizes that we're on ancestral lands of the coastal Mewok, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge the indigenous peoples who have been stewarding and maintaining a relationship on this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land we are on. With that, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And next, we will be moving on to approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And we have one item, which is the Kattati City Council's regular meeting minutes from November 14th, 2023. Are there any questions or concerns with the minutes from the council? No? Seeing none, this is an action item, and so I will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the minutes from our November 14th meeting? Not seeing anyone raise their hand, or jump up, or run to the podium. So Kevin, would you mind checking with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. Then I would be looking for a motion for the November 14th minutes.
Move to approve the minutes. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Not seeing any. That carries unanimously. So we will move on to the announcements. First item is meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda, where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Civic Ready by signing up on the city website, www.kattatcity.org, under the "How Do I" link at the top of the homepage. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please call 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, and Civic Ready. So next, we have approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Okay. And since this is an action item, I'll ask if the public has any comments on approval of the final agenda. Can't, I'm not seeing anyone jump up. Can you check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then we will move on to the next item, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2023-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may expend, extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the clerk will alert speakers when there are 30 seconds remaining. So with that, Kevin, I don't have any speaker cards. We don't have, does anybody have any citizens' business, that is, items not on the agenda, or wish to speak on the two items that are on the consent calendar? Not seeing anyone in the audience. Can you check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on citizens' business. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay. So then we have two items on the consent calendar. The first is the 2023 Agricultural Community Events Farmer's Market Downtown Shop and Stroll Holiday Event. And the second is an agreement with Landscape, Land Care USA to restore the La Plaza Demonstration Garden, and I would be looking for a motion on those two items.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously. And we will move on to Item 10, which is direction on future agenda items.
I have a question. I don't know if it's direction or just discussion. For the land acknowledgement, I know we have like a procedure that we created, but I just kind of feel that when I'm sitting, I feel like I should be standing. And I don't know if that's something anyone else, you know, feels, and I don't know if that's something that would be an agenda item for future modification. And if we're already standing, we can turn around and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I just feel it's more like an honor for our land acknowledgement. So I'm going to bring that up, and I don't know if it's on the agenda, or how that would be changed, or discussed.
Sure. If the council wishes, I can just put it as a future agenda item. We can discuss it in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then we will be moving on to public hearings. And the first one we have is consideration, the first reading and introduction of an ordinance establishing the Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone by amending Title 17, which is land use of the Kattati Municipal Code, and designating the property at 425 West Sierra Avenue with the Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay designation. And can we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Harvey, members of the council. This item for your consideration is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to create the Senior Mobile Home Park zoning overlay. Next slide, please. He did offer to give me the remote control so I could do this myself. Too many, too many powerpoints. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So some background on this item. As you know, residents of the Countryside Mobile Home Park approached the city for assistance in August of this year, to assistance to preserve their park as a seniors-only park. Countryside is located at 425 West Sierra Avenue, and it is comprised of 35 mobile home units. It is a seniors-only park, and it has been for quite a number of years. And in keeping with that, the residents are primarily in their 60s, 70s, and 80s. Next slide, please. So in August of this year, the property owner of the Countryside Park property held what's known as a meeting and consultation, which is required under state mobile home park residency law, when an owner wants to change the park rules. And so this meeting was held to notify the residents of the owner's intent to change the park from a seniors-only park to an all-ages park. The way that Countryside has been operating as a seniors-only park is by using an exemption, which exists, the senior exemption, to the Federal Fair Housing Act, which is allowed where at least 80% of the units in a community, discreet community such as this, are occupied by at least one person that's 55 or older. And under the park's own rules, the requirement has actually been that all of the units be occupied by at least one person who's age 55 or older. According to the state law, the park rules may be changed within six, or six months following the meeting and consultation. So Countryside residents, so that would take place in February of next year. Countryside residents asked the city to intervene and provide assistance. Next slide, please. The chief concerns related to conversion of the park for residents is the loss of affordability, potentially, to seniors with the change to all ages, in that in an all-ages park, there's more likely to be potentially households where there are multiple income earners as opposed to seniors who are more typically on fixed incomes. In addition, there's a concern among residents about change in character in the park, where they signed on to live in a seniors-only park, and that has been their expectation. And they believe that potentially a change to all ages could be a detriment to the community that they forged in the park, and infringe on the peace and quiet that they have enjoyed in a, in a senior park setting. The senior, or the city council took action and passed an urgency ordinance to place a moratorium on the conversion of senior mobile home parks. That was passed on September 12th, and went into effect immediately on October 24th. You extended that ordinance for a 22 and a half month period. The council also directed staff to explore mechanisms to preserve the park's senior-only status on a permanent basis. Staff have identified that the Senior Mobile Home Park zoning overlay is the best strategy to, to do this. Next slide, please. So an overlay zone is a tool that exists, or is a mechanism that's, that exists in the city's land use code. Overlay zones exist over a primary or underlying zoning, and they provide additional guidance to what is also, the guidance is also provided by the underlying zoning. The primary zoning of the Countryside Park property is neighborhood medium density. Kattati already has a mobile home park overlay in its land use code that is designated as MHP on the zoning map, and that overlay is on three different parks in the property, all three of our, in the, in the city, that were our three existing mobile home parks, which are Countryside, Sierra, and Ramble Creek. What the mobile home park overlay does is essentially restricts development on those properties to mobile home parks only. So no other development can take place on those properties without an amendment to the land use code, even other types of residential. So they are preserved as mobile home parks currently. But that designation, that zoning overlay, does not relate to any kind of age restriction. Next slide, please. So here's excerpt of our zoning map from the code, and you can see that there are sort of those pale, that pale orange color is neighborhood medium density. The properties that have the diagonal marking on them are the mobile home parks that are under the mobile home park overlay zone that we have currently. Okay. Next slide, please. So what the senior mobile home park overlay zone does is amend our existing mobile home park overlay to add a minimum age requirement for certain properties, and that'll be designated as MHPS on the zoning map. A number of jurisdictions in California have adopted this mechanism to preserve their senior parks. And essentially, it prevents conversion to all-ages parks. And it's based on that senior housing exemption, it's in the Federal Fair Housing Act, where at least 80% of the units are occupied by at least one person who's 55 or older. This approach has been legally tested, most notably with the City of Yucaipa. In 2009, they adopted a, one of these overlay zones to protect their 22 senior mobile home parks. And there was a lawsuit subsequently, and in 2012, the Ninth Circuit found in favor of the City of Yucaipa and upheld their, their ordinance. A number of cities, as I say, have adopted this. In California, most recently, the City of Petaluma, which just adopted a senior overlay ordinance for their mobile home parks in, last month. Our, what we're proposing with this ordinance is modeled very closely after the City of Yucaipa's overlay ordinance. Next slide, please. So what's contained within the proposed overlay zone ordinance is that 100% of the units in, that ha, in properties that have this designation would need to have at least one person who's age 55 or older. And again, that's following the tested legal model, which sets 80% at 55 as a, as a minimum. So it's a floor, not a ceiling. And local jurisdictions have the right to enact a higher standard as well. That, and the 100% that is proposed in this ordinance is reflecting the existing park rules. And, and, you know, our goal here is to really preserve the status quo at the park. There is a, another exemption, which is the same category of exemption, but is set at 100% of the units with at least one person who's 62 or older. But that actually sets a higher standard than what is currently in place for the park. And again, our, our hope here is to just maintain the status quo rather than set a higher standard. Under this, this overlay zone, under those requirements, we'd be okay to have a caregiver live in the unit, who, as long as there's at least one person who's 50, or at least as long as there's a senior who's 55 or older who's receiving the care, then caregivers, other family members could live in the unit. To the extent that there are any units which are not in compliance with the park's rules now, and do not have at least one person who's 55 or older, they will not be displaced because of the passage of this ordinance, should you, should you, should it be adopted. Just when the unit comes up for reoccupancy in the future, new, new occupant, at that point, it would need to become age compliant with the ordinance. Another point is that the age restriction applies to the occupants of the unit, not the owners of the unit. So an owner of one of the mobile home units in the park could be any age, as long as the occupants meet the, the age requirements. Next slide, please. Further, the ordinance that's proposed would place this overlay on the Countryside property. There are, again, 35 units currently in that park, there are mobile home units. There is also a house on the property, a single-family house, not a mobile home, not on a mobile home lot, and the, that, that house would be exempt from, from this requirement, from the overlay zone. The overlay could also be placed on other mobile home parks in the future, or any newly-created mobile home parks in the future. That would be a possibility. Right now, what's proposed is just to place it on Countryside. The other parks are all-ages parks that we have. A use permit is required for creation of a new mobile home park in the city. And I apologize, but there's an error here, which says that a use permit is required to add units to existing mobile home parks. That's actually not the case. A design review approval is required to add mobile home units to an existing mobile home park. So there is still a process for city approval when a mobile home park is expanded. And that's regardless of senior or not. That's, that's the case with any mobile home park. Next slide, please. So the overlay is enforceable. The overlay becomes part of our code, and as subject, and as such, it is subject to violations, will be subject to code enforcement action. The park owner will be required to conduct annual age verification and submit that to the city annually. In addition, because this, this requirement will be codified, the, the residents will have more legal recourse to pursue legal action against the owner if there are any violations of the age restriction requirement that, that occur. City staff held a community meeting among Countryside residents on October 17th, and also conducted onsite canvassing, door-to-door surveying of residents on October 24th, and we found overwhelming support for, for this, this overlay and preservation of the senior park status. Next slide, please. The, the ordinance, the overlay ordinance has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. They held a public hearing on November 6th, and reviewed the ordinance, and made a recommendation to the city council to adopt the mobile home park senior overlay ordinance. Next slide. With that, we have a recommendation for you. The Community Development Department and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council hold a public hearing, conduct a first reading, and introduce an ordinance establishing the Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone, and amending the zoning map to designate the property at 425 West Sierra Avenue as mobile home park senior. Available for your questions.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Laura?
I just had one question about the 80% versus 100% threshold. Do you, do you happen to know the City of Yucaipa, what, what level they used? Did we model that after theirs?
Yes. 80% with at least one resident, 55. Yeah. All the models that, that I looked at, which, there was like at least 12 in California, different ordinances, they all use the, the 80% at 55 or older.
So we're, so we're going higher than most other?
But remember, we are going higher than most of the ordinances do, but it's reflective of what's in the existing park rules, right? So we're just maintaining the status quo. The 80% comes from the, the requirement, or the exception in the Fair Housing Act, which says it has to be at least 80%. So 100% is more than 80%, and it's perfectly legitimate under the Fair Housing Act.
Yeah. And that, that exemption, what the exemption allows the communities to do is designate themselves as senior only. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's not necessarily, it's, it's what allows the communities to do that. It's not actually, you know, it's not a requirement that we, that we use that 80% threshold. It's just, anything above that allows a, a community designate itself as senior only.
So just a follow-up question, since the examples that have been legally tested had that 80% level, is there any reason to expect if we had a different level at 100% that it would affect the legality of it in any way?
No.
Thank you.
And did I hear you correctly, I, I think it was in there, that the current park rules are at 100%?
Correct.
So this is just status quo for what's there currently, correct? Okay.
Yes.
That's right. Just wanted to clarify that. Oh, yes.
Sorry. One other question. I'm curious where in the overlay zone language the, the non-displacement of existing households is reflected? And a related question, say a couple moves in where one partner is over 55 and one is under, and the partner over 55 dies. The park would no longer meet the 100% threshold, and I'm just wondering what in the, in the language allows that resident to stay there? Because I, I, I hope that whatever we enact does allow that.
Yeah. I'm going to address the first part of your question, Councilmember Ford. If you look at the, it's under Section B of the code, of the proposed code language applicability, and...
Packet page 47?
Yeah, that's packet. Well, I'm looking, actually looking at packet page 72. Sorry, I'm still trying to find it here, actually.
Oh, you're looking at the red line version?
I was actually looking at the red line version. Here it is. It's, I'm sorry. It's actually, so in the red line version, it's Section C4. And what it says is that spaces in mobile homes in a mobile home park in the MHPS overlay zone shall be leased or rented only to occupants who will not cause the requirements of this section to be violated. If the occupants of a space or a mobile home who caused the requirements, the age requirements to be violated, lease this space before the effective date of the ordinance, the occupants shall be allowed to remain, provided that when such occupants cease to occupy a space or mobile home in the park, it shall thereafter be rented or leased to occupants who meet the, the age restriction, in essence.
Okay. So I'm curious...
So then the second part of the question is what happens if a, a household is age compliant, but they have a change in their status? What, what prevents displacement at that point?
Well, I, I, I don't know. Perhaps the Community Development Director would like to comment on this. I think the way staff probably looks at this is that it applies at the initial creation of the lease, and if somebody were to pass away, or I, I think if somebody voluntarily moved away, that was a senior, and left in place, non-seniors, that would be different than a situation where somebody passed away while they were living there. But I, I don't expect that your interpretation would be that that's a violation of the, of the requirements.
I would agree with the city attorney. And it's, I would say, it's also, it's a standard practice in housing in general. Affordable housing is a good comparison. If I'm a resident that qualifies as affordable housing, for an affordable housing union, I live there, and I happen to get a college degree, or do something, get a promotion at work, and I no longer qualify, I am not forced to, to automatically move out of that home. For ownership, you can continue there for, for perpetuity. For rental units, there's a process, and I think the timeline is like a three-year process whereby you are expected to look for alternative housing situations. So I would say it's similar to that. It's, you must comply at the time of lease.
Thanks.
Kay, did you have a question? You had kind of partway raised your hand, I wasn't sure.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to make a comment that I, I liked the part about, I think this was added, it was something that we had asked about, that it's, it's the occupant, not the owner. So like if someone wanted to provide housing for their parents, or grandparents, or whatever that they could, and still have it in their name, and yet, you know, provide for their family members. So I, I'm glad that that made it in. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? All right. Then, oh, yes, Laura.
Sorry. I'm, I'm just following on to Councilmember Ford's questions. The Part E, Annual Certification for Senior Mobile Home Parks, it seems that we're asking the owner to certify that they are providing more current knowledge of the age of current... the owner to certify that they are providing more current knowledge of the age of current residents, not just at the time of lease creation in that section. So I'm I'm kind of, I'm just sort of struggling with that because it does seem like we're asking for more than just, you know, was this in in compliance at the time the lease was created? So is is that accurate or?
Yeah, so that, yeah, so that's, that is a mechanism to to ensure that the age compliances continues to be met for the for the park and for each unit. You know, my take on that is in the instance where there might be, you know, a discrepancy, you know, in the ages in the report, that, you know, the city would examine that and would check in with the owner to find out, you know, what what causes that, that, you know, that that lack of compliance? And has there been some kind of, has there actually been a change in occupancy in the unit? Is it a new lease? Or has there been a change in the household that held the lease? And, you know, and if it was the latter, if there's been some change in the household, that that means that, you know, they've fallen out of compliance, but they need that window of time to, you know, to continue living in the unit before, you know, they, the three year period, for instance, that we just discussed, you know, that we would we would be apprised of that and we wouldn't be considered to be a violation.
Is that covered in the very last sentence in Item 2, where it says, age certifications made by occupants in their current lease or rental agreements? So if the agreement had the two people and one passed away, that would be that current agreement? Is it not?
Yeah, essentially, when a when a space or a unit is occupied, then the property owner is needing to verify that they meet the age requirements. And that will be at the time of the lease, you know, the lease signing, that that would be, you know, that would be the case, if they they meet the age requirement. And then there, that could be, you know, checked up against with subsequent reporting.
So as long as that lease is current, lease or rental agreement is current, then they were met when that agreement was put in place, I think? Would that cover your concern?
It doesn't quite cover my concern because the, right before that, there's two other types of evidence that you can consider that are are different and talks about the current age of the occupants.
Right.
I mean, if the council desired, we could add a clarification that tenants shall not be evicted if due to, I don't know what, under what circumstances, the death of a of a lessee that was over 55 causes the the requirement to to be violated? That's that's not considered a violation of the ordinance. I think that's the concern I'm hearing from the council. We could certainly add that, and I I don't think we'd have to go back to the planning commission to add that requirement.
Or maybe something like what you were saying, that it would follow along with what Noah was saying about the affordable housing or something to like to say that it will follow that, those rules, regulations, so it's clear what happens if this isn't met?
Yeah. And Noah, do you have any anything to add, another way of approaching the clarification?
Yeah, I think if there's a specific concern that the council would like addressed related to the senior overlay, I would like to codify it and add language as suggested by the city attorney. Generally, though, there is a significant amount of fair housing legislation that supports relocation, eviction, all of that, that isn't discussed here because it's kind of the status quo, that also would go into making that evaluation.
Yes, Laura.
Could we maybe just refer to some of that relevant legislation, just to clarify, like in the, within the ordinance or something like that?
We could. I'm not sure we could do that tonight because we we don't have that at our fingertips, but I mean, it would be, it would be an appropriate way to to address it. Perhaps we can bring back an amendment to that effect and just try to to come up with some language tonight that would be suitable.
I think the cleanest way to address the concern that we're hearing would be to just add some clarifying language to the ordinance, as suggested by the city attorney. That way, the issue is is clearly addressed tonight, but it's in a way that doesn't significantly change the ordinance, have to go back to the planning commission. And then we can do a follow up with regards to some of these broader issues to inform the council, kind of what the status of housing law is and eviction and relocation requirements and all those things, because there's, it's a very large body of law.
And probably more each time the legislature meets. So Ben, would that address your concern?
Yeah, I was I was saving a bigger conversation for discussion, but I'm, I mean, yeah, I would propose adding a brief clause, giving a three year window after a death of a member of the household to come back into compliance.
Yes, Kay? I just wanted to clarify, are we limiting it to death? I mean, does the person have to die or can they just move away and then it doesn't meet the requirement anymore?
Well, I
Right?
I I think if they can voluntarily move away, they could do that after a day and and the overlay means nothing. So I think I want to limit it quite strictly, yes.
Okay, to death only? Okay.
I I mean, maybe, I'd be happy to look at what the, you know, incapacitation and, you know.
Because I, because I'm thinking like, for example, what if they had to go to an assisted living facility?
Right, right.
For example, that they didn't die, but they're, you know, they're still here, they just can't live independently anymore, but the people they lived with still want to be there.
Madam Mayor, I'm starting to worry that we're not going to be able to draft something suitable tonight, but I will tell you that it is our intention not to enforce it in a way that would that would result in in displacement of people immediately. So my suggestion would be, if that's your intention, that you give us some time to come back with some suggestions, because I was thinking about divorces, health concerns, where somebody's no longer able to occupy the unit, yet the owner and they leave, the former occupants are still there, but they're not meeting the requirement anymore. There might be some other examples that we can think of, and I think we need more time to to come up with those. Does that make sense?
Yes, so are you, is your suggestion that we leave it as is for right now?
Just adopt it for now, get it done.
Adopt it and you'll bring it.
And then we'll bring back an amendment.
We'll bring back an amendment.
You mean, we introduce it as is and then we amend it when we adopt it?
I think we need more time. I think we're going to need to re, we're going to need to bring back an amendment that would introduce the the clarification, because I don't think we're going to be able to draft it tonight and have it introduced tonight. But I think it's important that we do have you adopt the ordinance tonight in its current form because of the the need to get this done before the six month period.
Well, my question was about whether we can amend, this is first reading and introduction.
Correct.
So my question was whether we can do that adoption.
We could do that tonight, but what I don't think we can do is add, come up with all the appropriate circum
No, I understand that. My question is whether we can amend it at the time we adopt it, the second reading.
No.
Okay.
We'd have to introduce it first. Excuse me, and sorry for not.
Everybody clear? Any more questions? Not seeing any. Okay, then I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? I don't have, yes, sir. Can you please come to the podium? And if you wouldn't mind, it would help the clerk if you could state your name, so.
My name is Wayne Randall. I live at the Countryside Mobile Home Park. As to that issue you were speaking of, I believe, language about maybe any of that could go into an arbitration, and that would take care of anything that came up in that area. Simple, you know? That's just it. Sorry.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, yes?
Hi, I'm Marta Kishiba. I'm just concerned about one word that was, it said, yes, we can amend it, which I am all for, but you said not immediate displacement. So, I mean, let's say it's a lesbian couple and one is 80 and one dies and the other one is 40, just to make it up. And you're, I think you can't say in two years, you have to, even the lease, I don't know how the leases are, are they five years, 10 years? But I don't like the word, you know, immediate. It won't be immediate displacement, but will it, so it could be drafted that it's not displacement at all? And yes, that 48 year old or 39 year old could stay there and not be moved out of the house they've lived in, if they so choose. I don't know if that's possible.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Not seeing anyone else. All right, can we check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I'm going to give one, two, three, last chance, anybody wanting to speak on this, before we bring it back to the council? Not seeing anybody jump up. Okay, then I will bring this back to the council. And what is your pleasure on this particular item? Yeah.
Well, I, so this is about the whole overlay, not just that question we were talking about. And I first want to appreciate staff's work on putting this together so quickly and so thoroughly. I I was really impressed by the the documentation and the rationale in the ordinance we're we're going to consider, as well as the text of the overlay itself. So I'm happy to address that question about the, the only reason the the question comes up about displacement is because of the 100% requirement. Like, if we were saying 80 or 90%, it wouldn't be the same issue. So so I do want to come back and address that at some point, but I'm all in favor of introducing this overlay tonight.
Okay. Kay, did you have any comments?
No, just that I support it and also an amendment to protect people who are living there with the 55 age limit, and then if something should change in their family's status, that they not have to be displaced. And and to have that be an amendment in the future, I'm happy to work on that later, because I do think we need to adopt it tonight.
Laura, did you have any comments?
I just want to say I'm very supportive of of introducing this tonight and especially because of, especially because of the the way that it aligns with our housing element policies and goals to preserve and maintain senior housing. And I would also be supportive of enacting this with an 80% limit because, or floor, because I think that would allow more flexibility for the kinds of situations we're talking about. But if the rest of the council wants to do it 100%, I'm supportive of that as well, as long as we come back with an amendment later.
Sylvia, did you have comments?
I agree with what everyone said, and I think that it was 100% because that was status quo, what's currently the rule. So I don't know what the difference, I don't know if we change it to 80%, you know, whether that would provide some leeway for those situations or keeping it at 100%.
Well, if if we did change it to, think about it from the management perspective, if we changed it to 80%, they can choose to rent, to to lease some of the spaces to non seniors, so that would change the character of the park, I would think. I don't know for sure, but that's the kind of flexibility it would provide to management that doesn't exist right now under the current status quo.
I'm in favor of the 100%, but I think that we also need to look at the other situations that our colleagues here discussed.
I too am in support of this. I think it's it's our intent in in working with individuals to keep things at status quo. And right now, the status quo is 100%. And so my preference would be to leave it at that. I do believe that we need to come back and amend, you know, for those situations that that may be, you know, unforeseen at this moment. And I agree with you that it's difficult to list all of them, but we we should give staff time to to address that. I also concur with Vice Mayor, you know, as far as it meeting our general plan, you know, we we struggle with affordable housing and we struggle with keeping affordable housing. And over the time that I've been in Katati, I've seen things that are supposed to be affordable, all of a sudden not affordable anymore and rules change and things like that. So where we can help and where we can make that happen, I think that that it is important for that. And, you know, as pointed out in some of the documentation in here also, myself included, the population in Katati is aging. And, you know, I I fully understand when people say, you know, you get to a certain age and you would like to stay in your home. You don't want to get to this age, you know, and have worked all your life and and have your home and have someone, you know, have the possibility of ripping that out from under you to to make things, you know, to to make more money some somehow. So I personally understand where these folks are coming from. So anything that we can do to help with that, as small as it is, I would be supportive of that. So with that, then I would be looking, do you need in our motion for you to come back with an amendment, or is that just direction for you?
No, I think we already received a direction, so I'm comfortable if it's not included in the motion.
Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion for this particular item. Somebody, anybody?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, oh, hold on. I changed the page. I make a motion to amend the mobile home park overlay zone, establishing a senior mobile home park overlay zone by amending Section 17.20.020, 17.28.030, and 17.90.020, of title 17 Land Use of the Katati Municipal Code and amending the City of Katati zoning map to designate the property located at 425 West Sierra Avenue Katati, a search and parcel number 144-340-041, with the senior mobile home park MHPS overlay zone.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's, any abstentions? Not seeing any, then that passes unanimously at its first reading. Now, we will move on to our regular agenda. And the first item is ratification of nominee for appointment to Measure S Citizens Oversight Committee. And do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So if this if this feels like deja vu, it is, because we just talked about this last meeting, we're talking about it again. Each council member nominates a Measure S Citizens Oversight Committee member, as you all know. And at our last meeting, Councilmember Lemus put forward Carmen Garcia, I believe, yeah. And that was approved by the council in the November 14th meeting. And then we had several other applicants for the position, the remaining vacant position, including Tanya Moore, Amy Lyman, and Lori Alderman, which were attached, they're all attached to the staff report. Subsequently, Lori Alderman did retract her application, so it was just Amy Lyman and Tanya Moore. Councilmember Rivers, I think, spoke with both the candidates and decided to put forth and nominate Tanya Moore as her Measure S Oversight Committee member. And that is basically it. I would be happy to answer any questions and go from there.
Any questions, council? Kay, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I actually did speak with all three. And, you know, that's when Lori let me know that she had changed her mind. And Amy is going to be helping with the research on the Katati library, or having a library here in Katati, so she is definitely still going to be involved. But Tanya agreed, and I think she's going to be amazing, and I'm super excited she's joining us. And then just a quick little thing, my my last name is Rivers, so I think the apostrophe is either in the wrong place or they just thought I was River, which is also a beautiful name, but not mine. So, thank you. And I would like to invite Tanya to come forward if if you want to. And I would like to invite Tanya to come forward if, if you wanna say something before accepting.
I'll be quick, it's late. But I'm just happy to help. So it was nice to have the opportunity and, you know, been in Cattati, lifelong Sonoma County residents, and I've been in Cattati since two thousand and seven, and love our little town, so just happy to help in any way.
Great, thank you. Any other comments by the council? Then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item can raise their hand, jump up, run to the podium. Not seeing anyone moving. Can you check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. For Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I will bring it back and would be looking for a motion.
Can I just, quick, first, I just want to thank Tanya and Amy both for being willing to serve. This is an important job to make sure that the city is spending Measure S money like we told people we would. So, thanks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the motion to ratify Councilmember Rivers' nominee for appointment to the Measure S Committee Oversight Committee, and also want to thank you, Tanya.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and yes, thank you, Tanya, and it'll be lots of fun. The group is, is a good group, so I'm sure you'll learn lots about how we do lots of good things for the community. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Am I allowed to vote on this?
Yes, you are.
Then aye.
Okay. Any abstentions? Any no's? So that passes unanimously. You can ratify yourself. Congratulations, Tanya. And thank you for being willing to serve.
Welcome.
Okay, so the next is an agreement for an interim police chief. And Damian, are you gonna take this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have the report on this one. So as I think, well, the council certainly knows, and I think most people know, the police chief is retiring at the end of the calendar year, and we're currently in the midst of a recruitment process. The, just given the recruitment process and then the, the time it takes to onboard somebody, there's gonna be a, probably like about a two-month time period where we're gonna be between chiefs. And so the item before you tonight is about an interim police chief agreement with Hank Schreeter, who I'll talk more about in a second. So one thing that's important, just to note, it's in the staff report, but I'll just highlight some of the main points, is, is for the interim, Hank is a retired annuitant, so that's a very specific term in Cal-Pers, and it falls under a variety of very specific rules that you have to follow in order to employ a retired annuitant. And some of the, I guess some of the headliners are that it's, that we have an open recruitment going right now, so that's a requirement to be able to hire a retired annuitant. There's a nine-hundred-and-sixty-hour limit per fiscal year for retired annuitants. And, and also the, there's also a rate of pay requirement, so it has to be within the existing pay range of, of a listed, posted job position, which in this case is the chief of police. So Hank, and I guess his actual name is Robert, which I did not know, so I learned something new. But Hank Schreeter has been in law enforcement for a long time. He's, he previously worked for the Santa Rosa Police Department for twenty-eight years, retiring as the chief of police there in two thousand and nineteen. After retired, he has served interim roles as the chief of police with Emeryville Police Department and with the City of Novato, doing two different, two different periods. So he, he's coming to us with a lot of experience and very qualified police chief to kind of get us through this time between police chiefs. And I'll just point out, although you'll see it, is there's a resolution, and that's more for Cal-Pers documentation, and then agreement, an employment agreement for his interim service time here if the council chooses to ratify it. And Hank is also here tonight, just so you know. Just if there's questions, if you want to ask him anything specifically, but I'd be also happy to answer any questions that I can answer. Thank you.
Questions?
No, I just want to say that I've worked with Chief Schreeter in the past at different organizations, I just appreciated, and I didn't know that he was being put forward as interim, so I just appreciate his work and glad, glad that he's here.
Other questions? No? And I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Please raise your hand up. That's okay. Well, it's okay.
I just, the latest poll was that Cattati conducted, it's all about the police, and I commend the general who's coming in. I'm at odds, because I think we spend too much money into the police department. There's more women, that they're on bicycles, and they're on their feet and not in cars. And the, the, the survey didn't allow us to make any comments, really, it just was a yes or no, so I didn't like the survey. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Hank, did you want to speak? We'll give you the floor.
Mayor Harvey, council members, I do appreciate the faith that the city manager has and, as well as the chief parish, who has managed the Cattati Police Department for several years now, having faith in me to take on that role. So I do appreciate that, and I don't take it for granted at all. So thank you for tonight.
Thank you for that, and thank you for being willing to help us during this transition period. So with that, if no one else wishes to speak on this item, and did we check with Zoom?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, so any comments? Any, then I would be, yes?
I'll just echo Councilmember Lemus's comments to thank Chief Schreeter for being willing to come sit and work with us for a couple of months.
Okay, then I would be looking for a motion?
Motion? Motion to ratify the city manager's appointment of Robert Hank Schreeter, a retired annuitant as interim police chief under Government Code Sections twenty-one, two-two-one, H.
I'll second that. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? All right. Well, we look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you very much. So, uh-oh, looks like Ashley's moving in, so it must be that, you get the next item, Ashley, the outdoor equity grants program application?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am here to discuss an opportunity that we are going to, hopefully you'll approve us taking, and that is to apply for the outdoor equity grants program grant that, the deadline is coming up this month, and we're looking for a blessing for the application. So just a little bit of background about the grant is that in two thousand and nineteen, the outdoor equity grants program was enacted when Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill two oh nine, which is now part of the administration's Outdoors for All Initiative. The outdoor equity grants program, also known as O E P, improves the health and wellness of Californians through new educational and recreational opportunities, service learning, career pathways, and leadership opportunities that strengthen a connection to the natural world. The intent of the program is to increase ability to residents in underserved communities to participate in outdoor experiences within their community, at state parks, and other public lands. The funding helps establish hubs for local activities and trips to natural areas for underserved communities. Round one applications were received in October of two thousand and twenty-one, and grant awards were announced in two thousand and twenty-two. The city did not apply or receive funding for the first round, but round two is happening now, and they will, all the grants are administered through the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Office. Public agencies are eligible to apply, as well as special districts, joint powers of authorities, schools, and other nonprofits. The maximum that you can apply for is seven hundred thousand dollars, which is what I plan to apply for, or the city plans to apply for. One of the requirements for the grant is to, application is to choose a community home base, and this is where I really thought that the city would be a really great candidate for this grant. The, is, you have to, you have to have a central gathering place in the underserved community, and we do qualify, I've already been through the fact finder to see whether or not we do qualify, and we do. But in the community that has, that needs access to outdoor programs, so examples of central gathering places can be a school, a park, a rec center, community meeting space. But the one that we have that seems so obvious to me was the Veranda Floody Ranch, which is right next door to City Hall, if you're not familiar with it. So that would be our community home base. And the way that the grant would kind of work is that you would plan activities at the community home base, so at the, at the ranch, and then those, those activities would prepare you for excursions, basically, that you would take. So an example could be something like you're learning how to put up a tent for the first time to prepare for a camping trip, that maybe your family, your family has never been camping, or they're scared to go. So what the grant would do is teach you how to do that, and then take you on a trip where you're in a safe and comfortable environment, where you're not just set out on your own. But then the grant would also pay for all of that, so that you have access to things that maybe you wouldn't be able to otherwise. So this could happen, it doesn't have to be just camping, but some of the places that you can go are to regional parks, state parks, national parks, tribal lands, rivers or lakes, beach, forest, mountain, basically any environment you can think of, but it just has to stay within California, since it is put on by the California State Parks. We have already conducted research on programs that the community would like to, or conducted outreach on programs that the community would be interested in participating in, and the highest, the highest, like priorities that we've found are camping trips for families, primarily, family trips, day trips to the beach, overnight trips to specifically Yosemite, everybody wanted to go to Yosemite, and much more. We are still conducting outreach as we speak, we have, we'll have a online survey up soon. And all of that feedback will be included in the grant application. If it is awarded, the city would partner with the, the Veranda Floody Ranch current operators, Farmster and Sandy Loom, to help with some of the education pieces at the, on the onsite, for the onsite portion. We would also be partnering with Santa Rosa Junior College and Rancho Cattati High School students to provide some recreational opportunities and educational opportunities. One of the requirements is to have an internship program, and the grant will fund the pay, like to pay them, to pay this interns for that, and the staff, and, and...
Can you, can you stop for a second?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, I think I, when I read this, I missed the part about Santa Rosa Junior College. Do I need to recuse myself from this, since I'm a SRJC employee?
Oh. That would be a question for our attorney.
So...
It's not your department.
What's the relationship between?
So it would be with the Environmental Science Department, so I don't know. They would be partnering with us to help catch your...
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Yeah, so you should, because it's the same department that you work in, you should recuse yourself and not participate in any way of this decision.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's all right. So just, if you could just indicate for the record that, that you are employed by that department.
It's the, yeah, I'm, I'm employed by the Earth and Space Sciences Department, which houses both environmental science and astronomy, so I'm not in the same discipline, but in the same...
Okay. Okay, so, so you're gonna recuse yourself?
Yeah, should I leave the room?
You don't have to leave the room, because it's the ten ninety issue, but you're, you're, you're welcome to sit in the audience, or we can call you when it's time.
Then you won't, then you won't be very far. All right, sorry for that interruption, Ashley, it's...
So yes, we would be working with the Santa Rosa Junior College, not council members or Vice Mayor Sparks, but to help with staffing for that, for the different trips, and Rancho Cattati High, and the grant can pay for that. So other items that the grant funds can be used for are the actual, is transportation to and from these trips, staff costs, entry fees, lodging, supplies, and in some cases, meals. So for instance, if we were camping overnight, we would be able to buy groceries to serve meals. We aren't able to go out and have extravagant restaurant meals, but we can provide, it's a per diem, there's a rate. And then funding, two of the things that I know, questions that have come up that we cannot use funding for if awarded are any construction projects, so you can't build a storage shed to, for any of the items, or purchasing vehicles. So we can't buy a transport van to drive to on a trip, but we can buy plane tickets, bus tickets, probably cab fare if we needed to, but, and rent them, but you can't actually purchase vehicles that you would have on site. So we've had really great feedback so far in all of the outreach that we've done, people that are very interested in it, I mean, who wouldn't want a free trip to somewhere in California that maybe they wouldn't be able to get otherwise? And we just thought it was a really great opportunity for us to take, and we're kind of already set up to do it with so many great resources around us, especially the farm right next door. And so we're really looking forward to applying and hope that it's something that we can get, but we're, I'm looking for your blessing in a recommendation to adopt a resolution endorsing the City of Cattati's application for the outdoor equity program grant funds, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I have a question. How Rancho Cattati High School, there's a teacher there that put on a multicultural event over the summer, how will the students be selected? Because I know that there's, he said that some of the clubs, like there's Black Student Union and Mecha Club, and he said there's about twenty students that live here in Cattati, and they really want to be involved in the community, he wants to try and involve the students. So how can we kind of link them up or find out how they can be involved in this program?
I would love their contact info.
Okay.
Yeah, I can just get that from you. So we don't have, I, nothing has been selected yet, but I know that the class that I already work with, where we do a recreation internship, that is an, an area that we know we could just kind of plug right into, but that, we're not limited to using that group. So any groups that you have that you think would be interested, more the merrier.
Okay. And yeah, so I, I, I'm really excited about this one. I, as a board member for the Park Foundation, you know, we do like, yes, coasts, yes, mountains, yes, rivers, so we do a lot of, very popular programs. So that's great that we're gonna have something here. I support something like this.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think actually sort of building on what she said, I, I'm wondering on how, how you're planning to recruit from the underserved, you know, what is referred to as the underserved community here?
Yeah, so like to, to come to the different events?
Or part, so...
To participate if awarded.
I understand that you have, you're asking for a grant for something that is like not real yet?
Yes.
But, you know, when we get to that point, have, have you considered how you're gonna try and to reach these, this group of people?
I mean, there's, there's several ways that we would, would do it, like for the beginning, from the, from, at least what I already know is putting it on our website, social media, flyer-ing, tabling at events, hanging flyers throughout the community, putting applications at, at, at public spaces like schools, senior centers, the library, it doesn't, we don't have to only advertise in Cattati, especially if it's not competing with something else nearby. I'm sure our neighbors in, you know, the area would, like, especially Runer Park, like thinking of how close we are. Like, that use some of the same places as us to go, to, like, the library, for instance, is our library too, right now. So that sort of thing, and then any, any public space, like senior living, apartment complexes, like their lobbies, that, that, and, and then I am really hoping that we're gonna have an activity guide that we could advertise this in at some point, our city newsletter that mail, gets mailed out and posted online. But also, I'm always looking for advice, if you have a, an inside track somewhere that I don't know.
Okay, no, thank you. And, and is it, is it going to be limited to Cattati residents?
It's not. It's not, so the, the way that the grant works is that it's, it's supposed to be primarily provided by, to the community, but you don't have to limit it to the community. So it's, it's your, the area surrounding the home base and surrounding communities. So we don't have to limit it, we can, we could choose to make, to prioritize Cama, Cattati residents. But if there were more that wanted to come and we had the capacity, we don't have to tell them no.
Okay, no, that's great, I just want to make sure, you know, it's, it's, you know, this underserved community here and then expanding out before.
Yes.
People who are not underserved.
Yes, so we're not taking a bunch of.
A little further, right.
Windsor residents first, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, nothing against Windsor, lovely town. No questions this way, okay. Alright, then I will open this up for public comment, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone jump up, can you check with our Zoom attendees please?
Thank you Mayor Harvey, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, yeah, Ashley, I think that this is a great opportunity and I, and I do hope that, that we do get the grant. Two of my three children went through the expeditionary learning, uh, course at, at the middle school. And it was great to, to see the groups of kids and have them, you know, use the skills that they, that they have in order to prepare the meals, shop for the meals, decide what they have to pack, you know, knowing where they're going, you know. It's so, that whole learning process is really good to start, start with the kids. So I know that they learn a lot and they're able to utilize skills that they didn't think that they would need. Things like math in order to determine how much of something that they need to make a meal for, for everyone. Was, was always an interesting to watch the kids do. So hopefully we will get, get this going and get it awarded. But I'm all, all in favor of this, so I would be looking for a motion. Okay. Sorry, I had it and now it's disappeared, the tab. I think it's just this one, uh, it's recommended that, that the city council adopt a resolution endorsing the City of Cattati's application for the outdoor equity program grant funds.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And so let the record show that we, that is a four and one recused, that's not really a category, but, but. Then I will invite the vice mayor to come back. Unless you don't want to hear the city manager's report and want to sit out there for that.
Yeah, she can't avoid it unless she leaves the building. Alright, so just a reminder that the holiday toy drive is currently underway. And the City of Cattati, Rancho Adobe Fire District, Sonoma State PD, and then Rotary of Runer Park Cattati is hosting the toy drive. And for anyone that wants to apply for assistance, they can go to the Cattati Police Department or any of the Rancho Adobe Fire stations to complete an application. And applications will be accepted up through December 6th at 3:00 PM. Santa's Elves will be wrapping the gifts on December 10th. And on December 16th, they will make their gift deliveries on the back of fire trucks and police cars. And then for those wishing to donate, please also consider gifts for the age groups of seven plus as the majority of requests are normally in this age group, so, you know, pre-teen to teen. And gift cards are gladly accepted. So that we're able to provide for those between ages of nine and se, and 16 years of age. And donations are accepted through Christmas, through December 25th. And their, donations can be accepted at the Cattati Police Department Rancho Adobe Fire stations. So anyway, that's, it's a great program that continues, that we continue to host every year. We're also around the corner from a housing resource fair, so Cattati is also hosting a regional housing fair. That's being led by the Napa-Sonoma Housing Collaborative, and it's gonna be on Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 AM to noon at the Cattati Smart Station Depot Building. And the goal of the fair is to provide information to interested community members about housing resources available in Sonoma and Napa counties. And there will be free food, informational handouts, and a panel discussion on ADUs and the benefits of affordable by design housing options. So everyone's invited to come by and learn more. And I will also add that, that, just as a side note, the, the consultant doing the specific plan update will be moving into the depot building this Wednesday, so they're gonna be operating out of that community as they do that plan update, so. That's gonna be, anyway, for anyone that's interested in providing feedback in that plan, it's gonna be, they're gonna be very accessible for everyone out there. We also just recently received Reach Code, what's called a frontrunner recognition, so that was pretty cool. So the California Energy Codes and Standards Program has formally recognized the City of Cattati as a frontrunner for our work to draft and adopt Calgary Intervening Cycle Tier 1 EV Charging Requirements. It's kind of a mouthful, but as you recall, we did a mid-cycle code amendment to the building code to add the EV charging standards. And so the councils move forward and update with these standards, created one of the most comprehensive EV charging standards in the state. So that's why we were recognized as a frontrunner. And, uh. Anyway, that's, I think that's it, there's a lot of other stuff here, but that's, that's the main point, which is, anyway, it was very exciting to see that. And then planning for the active transportation plan, the planning commission reviewed the ATP on November, uh, I believe it was November 6th, including the project list. And the project goals and strategies are returning to the planning commission on December 4th for the review. And then it'll be finalized over the winter and then it'll be back, I think in the February timeframe. So for finalization and adoption, so that's moving quickly now. And then also, Flahaven Estates is a subdivision off Overwood Highway near Clove Year. That's also anticipated to come to planning commission on December 4th for recommendation to the city council. So you all will be seeing that in the near future, it's probably the next housing development that you'll see before you. Yeah, and the agenda is published, yeah, thank you, the agenda is published for that planning commission meeting, so. If anyone's interested in looking at it, getting a sneak peek, it's, it's out there. This Friday, December 1st is the annual holiday tree lighting in La Plaza Park from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And we definitely welcome everyone to come out and celebrate the holiday season with us as Santa joins us to light the tree and, and visit with the Cattati children. We'll also have food vendors, gift vendors, free cookies, coffee, hot cocoa, horse and trolley rides, and entertainment on stage throughout the evening to make sure it's, you know, entertaining for all. And, um. And the following day on December 2nd, as you all know, you just adopted the, the permissions tonight, is the downtown hall, downtown shop and stroll event, you know, on Overwood Highway, and that's from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And this event will feature live music, food, and craft vendors, and visits, also visits with Santa. And it's free to attend and there's lots of, you know, great vendors. I think it's 50 something vendors this year, so it's quite a, yeah. So far, so that's, so anyway, it's, um, there's a lot of vendors and it's very well, very well attended, so. It's always good news to see that growing each year. And then December 9th, we're hosting our breakfast with Santa event. And that's just, like I said, a teaser because it's sold out, but there is a waiting list if anyone wants to sign up for the waiting list.
We did let people in today from the waiting list.
Yes, that's true, yeah, she, yeah, someone did drop out and someone was let in. And they were super excited about it and they were trying to come in and give Ashley hugs and kisses, but it's not. It's not allowed, so anyway, they're very excited, I'll leave it at that. On Saturday, December 16th, from 10:00 to 3:00, we, we'll be hosting our drop and shop event that day for, basically hosting children, while their parents can go out and shop. So it's like a little mini camp for parents that they have some time to shop, or they can do, I guess, whatever they want. That's for children ages five to 12, and they can sign up online now. And then finally, we have, like every year, we have our winter break, Cattati Camp Winter Break. And that's for the two weeks of school over the Christmas time when, when school's obviously out. But parents may need some, some activities for their children. And we do crafts, games, outdoor, outdoor time, and many more other fun activities. So that's also available to sign up online. And any more information on city programs or events, they're happy to, you're hap, you can contact Ashley at 665-4222, or she's sitting right here if anyone has any questions for her. To register, and also can register online for any of our events. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Oh, alright.
Alright.
Then we will move on to city council member reports.
I don't have anything today.
My committees have not met since last meeting.
You guys, our scheduled education committee meeting was canceled, so we, table to attend.
Yeah, I guess the, we, we went to the same meeting that we were not informed was canceled. But tomorrow is the fourth Wednesday of the month, so if anyone would like to come and join me for my unofficial offer, office hours over potato skins at Redwood Cafe. I'll be there tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. And I would love to hear from anyone, any Cattati residents who would like to share what's working or what they would like us to work on, thanks.
Okay, um, I have sort of a long one. I want to, there was a lot happening with Zero Waste Sonoma, their work plan. I want to highlight some of the Cattati things, but some of the other things. So the SB 30, 1383 compliance, we moved from compliance in 2022 to, from 86% up to compliance in 2023 to 96%. So yay Cattati, we're getting up there. There were two cities that already hit 100% and that was Petaluma and Sonoma, so we can get there. I have faith in our community.
Can you remind us what that is?
That is SB 13, it's the.
That organics?
The short-lived climate pollutants, it's getting the food, the food waste.
Okay, organics.
Organics, yeah, mhm, yeah. So we're, we're getting there. And with the recycling, the AB 341 compliance, we actually went from 90% to 100%, so that was good. They have done a lot of Spanish outreach and they were able to attend 11 different farmers markets. Pascititos Parents Program, they went 18 times, they attended 89 other events in the Spanish community, and they advertised on KBBF 33 times. So they had a total of 151 different outreaches with Zero Waste Sonoma on that. So I thought you might want to hear about that. The number of calls to the ECO desk was actually down, but they think that that's because when we had COVID in 2020 and 2021, a lot of people had stuff that they were trying to get rid of. And so there was a lot of calls with, you know, what do I do with this, what do I do with that? But for January through June of this year, they have fielded 713 English calls and 22 Spanish calls. And let's see, what's some other interesting things in here? They are really going, they got a person to do marketing and outreach and they're really hitting a lot on different social media, different things. So they've been having different posts on e-waste recycling and compost giveaways and household hazardous waste and, and all different things like that, so they've had really good usage there. The website was really actually the most interesting because our, our Zero Waste Sonoma website gets used, uh, let's see, how many, where did that go? It had, um, from 7122 to 6323, it had 40,695 visit, visits. And not only do we have visits from all the jurisdictions, we actually are receiving visits from all over California and other states, as well as the Philippines, India, Canada, United Kingdom, Australia, and South Africa. Because that's how well-known our Zero Waste Sonoma is, that a lot of people come to Zero Waste Sonoma's website to get information on, you know, what to do with things. So I thought that was like really interesting, that that was happening. And then the Household Hazardous Waste Program is moving along. And I want to mention the most exciting thing out of our meeting that's related to that is we are, um, let me get this right. We are entering into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire three and a half acres located in Windsor to site a household hazardous waste in North County. Because over the years, what's happened is people like Cattati who are close to the landfill, it's easy for them to go out and use the facility, but in all of the, the work that's been to know over the years, the farther that you get away from there, the numbers drop off. And they've done a lot of, uh, roving e-waste events and things like that. But it's not the same as what we have here where people can go out there. So that'll be pretty exciting that we'll be able to purchase that. After that's purchased, of course, then we'll have to figure out how to build a facility. The, the buildings that are on there are really not in that great a shape. But it's a three and a half acre site, so what hopefully will happen, if we can get it worked out properly, is not only will they be able to do the household hazardous waste there, but we might be able to do some of the other programs. Some of the other programs like, we've had pretty good work with e, e-waste and mattresses. And this was pretty exciting for me, last year we collected 553 mattresses. And I can remember the first time that I went on a tour of the landfill out there. One of the most disturbing things for me to see was just truck after truck coming in and dumping in on the floor mattresses. So it's wonderful that we actually have the capabilities of recycling those. Another new program that we're working with the Conservation Corps on is solar panel recycling. And they have had really good, they were able to collect 186 panels. And unfortunately, only six of them were able to be reused, they did test them and all that. But 180 panels were, were sent for recycling. So that's, they're starting to work on new and evolving things, so that was my Zero Waste Sonoma. Lot of stuff's going on with that, so. And that's all I have tonight. Any questions? And we will move on to public comments on non-action agenda items. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on non-action agenda items? Not seeing anyone jump up here, can you check with our Zoom attendees please?
Thank you Mayor Harvey, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment.
Okay.
That'll end Zoom public comment.
Okay.
I just want to commend all of you for doing so much for local homes and for the community. They really, at Sierra, we were changed from a senior park to an all park. And we love all the people in the park now, but we didn't realize that we could have done what you all have done. But secondly, and I know you're all aware of this, even if you win, I'm sure the people who own it will go to court and fight it, and you will fight it, and you will win. But there's so, it's such a stupid law, you have. But there's so, it's such a stupid law, you have to pay even when you win. And that's why I think we lost rent control for renters in Katati, and we lost by seventeen votes, I think. So it's just a beware, how, I don't know legislatively we can change that law, that when you win from these owners who have trillions, and the city loses a lot of money because lawyers get a lot of money. So I'm just saying beware and happy holiday.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Then I will close public comment on non-action agenda items, and we will move to the next item, which is a closed session. We have a conference with legal counsel with anticipated litigation, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D four, and there's one case.
All right, we are back from closed session at eight thirty-four and we have nothing to report out of closed session. The next item is information received after the agenda was posted. And do we have any?
There was none, Mayor Harvey.
There was no information received. Then I will call this meeting adjourned at eight thirty-five. Thank you everyone and good evening.